Good afternoon, everybody. Appreciate you being here. Oh, there, perfect. Excellent, thank you. Is Pastor Jonathan Hindren here? He was gonna give our prayer from the New Beginning Christian Fellowship. Kim Hayfon, would you like to give us an invocation?
I would.
Well, thank you, thank you. Is our, I don't see Dennis Wagner here. Oh, Dennis. Very good, and he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after that, so.
Our Heavenly Father, we're very grateful to be gathered here in this commission meeting today. We ask a special blessing on these commissioners as they pursue the duties of the county and the items of business that come before them. We ask thy blessing, O B F M, that they'll be wise beyond their years and be able to make appropriate decisions. We're very grateful to live in this beautiful part of the country and the beautiful part of the state. We are very blessed to be here, be surrounded by good friends and good neighbors. We pray for a bit of moisture to come to our part of the world. We are dry and we need sufficient for our needs. We know we'll have a hot summer going forward. We are grateful for this beautiful time of the year. We've celebrated Thanksgiving and now we'll celebrate the Christmas season. We ask that our hearts will be open and full and recognize those around us that are in need and try to meet those needs the best we can. Again, we're very grateful to be here and to be part of this community and part of this county and system by thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise. The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis. It's good to see you and thank you for leading us in the pledge and for your service to our country. Thank you, Kim, for that invocation. We'll now start our agenda. We'll start with the consent agenda. The consent agenda is means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved in one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve today's consent agenda existing.
Do you mind if I pull two things off?
I was gonna pull two.
Oh, well, let me hear.
Are they the same two, or should we see?
With the exceptions, I was gonna make a motion to approve the items as submitted with the exceptions of G.
Very good, so we have a motion for the consent agenda with items G and I, which is, we'll address after that. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the motion passes. So we'll now start with, our first item on the agenda will be acceptance of a request for proposal, RFP, from Durham, Jones, and Pennegar for the collection of Diamond Valley Special Service District accounts.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that this be considered by the full commission with separate discussion because, my understanding of this, maybe Eric, would you like to give an overview, or do you have an overview of this? Or do you want me to summarize what I believe I'm looking at? I believe the Fire District has had some difficulty collecting some of the assessments that have been levied and they would like to have the county commission approve a contract to pursue those collections for them. My concern with that is, is that this seems really to be the wrong body for doing that. But as a duly constituted board, the Diamond Valley Special Improvement District has the ability to enter into this contract by themselves with Durham, Jones, and Pennegar. And so I would like this not approved at this time and referred back to the district because of that.
So we have a motion not to approve this.
I'll second that. That's my concern, too.
We have a motion and a second not to approve this. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the motion passes.
Commissioner Rensstrom would probably speak to item I.
Sure. So it has been tradition in the past that on Christmas Eve and on Thanksgiving or New Year's Eve, we allow staff to leave half-day. It's always kind of been a tradition that we've had for several years. The difficulty is a lot of the title companies look at our public notice and assumes that we're gonna be open on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, half-day. And so they kind of account on that. And so they've come, reached out and says, we know it's a tradition. We're fine with that tradition of closing office on Christmas Eve, half-day. They're like, if you could just put it in the public notices. So I'd like to amend our holidays to include a half-day on New Year's Eve and a half-day on New Year's Eve.
And I think that's a good move, too, and I actually see a public safety benefit for that because so many of our employees and things have family and they're traveling and it gets dark very, very early and the weather can be whatever it wants to be at that time of year. I just think this would be a good move. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the motion passes. On to item one, consideration of purchase requests and ratification of purchase requests for the Sheriff's Office, Convention and Tourism Sheriff's Office. Ray Boyer, it's good to see you.
Hello. Alright, the first item is a ratification for some optics for the Sheriff's Office. They got a really super good deal on the Cyber Monday and so we thought saw the benefit in them doing that promptly instead of waiting for the commission meeting. And the amount of that is $11,537 and no change. And that line item is full, but they do have budget and other areas that they can pull from. The next one is a ratification as well. It is for a Ford F-150 that was purchased in the first part of the year where the bottom, the bottom line was less than 10,000, but the purchase of the, due to trade-ins, but the purchase of the truck was $46,790 and we thought it appropriate to ratify that due to the high cost of that one item.
This one that was involved in a collision, by any chance?
Hopefully so.
I hope not.
I don't think so. The next one is for tourism. It is for $30,000 and that is a budgeted item. And the last one is for the Sheriff's Office again. It is for the new canine service dog and the purchase of that is $11,025.
That's for the actual animal itself, right, the dog?
For the animal, security and shipping, and then the California sales tax.
Very good.
And that was, again, not a budgeted item, but they do have budget elsewhere to cover that.
So I do have a question. One of the reasons why we're buying a new cane dog, our last canine dog got shot. We had to retire it. So did USIP pay us?
It lived.
It lived, but did USIP compensate us for any of that?
I, I'm not aware of any of that.
You don't?
Might be something we want to discuss with them. And part of, part of what happened there, the dog has made a fairly good recovery, but I think she is about seven years old. They typically have an eight to nine-year service life as a service animal. And as far as the drug sniffing, she had a year or so left in her. Because of jaw problems and how she was shot, she wasn't ready for bite-type work. But the canine handler, wife got a job up front, up north, he had to transfer because of that. And it would take at least a year, train, test with a new handler, and she only had a year left. And so under those circumstances, county made a decision to sell Tess to the handler. Mostly this is for the public to understand what's happening there. But anyway, I think that it's great to get a replacement for Tess and I'm glad that Tess is enjoying retirement at the ripe old age of eight.
Yeah.
And Commissioners, I'll check into that.
Alright, because if you look at that body cam, Tess really honestly did save an officer's life that night. So, I'm fine with that. I was just curious about the insurance, so thank you.
We have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve the purchase request as outlined by the Clerk Auditor's Office.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item two is-
Commissioners, I do have one more item. It's not on the agenda. It just came up today. The Sheriff's Office is looking to purchase a new Ford F-150 for the cost of $33,594. But they do have two trade-ins going in and so it's kind of a time-sensitive issue. And then the bottom line of that will be $5,380 and they were hoping that that could pass and then we can ratify it on the next.
Okay with that.
I don't even think you'd need to ratify it. I think the agenda noticed up, we're gonna go over purchases and requisitions because one item wasn't in the packet. I think we still could ratify it, but I think it's fine for you guys.
Well, I'd give tentative approval. If that's what you're wanting to give, I would like to see it formally on the agenda of our next meeting. So that it's noticed up completely and properly.
I think since it's under the 10,000, I'd be okay with that and then proceed to get it.
And it is less than the 10,000. So I would make that motion that we approve the additional purchase of the truck with the two trade-ins.
I agree. I second.
So we have a motion and a second to go ahead with this purchase. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the motion passes. Thank you so much, Ray. Item two, consideration of ordinance 2017-1110, an ordinance revising the county's requirement and procedures for providing cremation services for unclaimed bodies and indigent deceased. Eric, this is one of your-
Yeah. The County Attorney's Office spends quite a bit of time every year helping to track down next-of-kin from unclaimed bodies that someone passes away in a house and doesn't have anybody living close by or checking on them regularly, or someone who's homeless. And often we, there aren't next-of-kin for these. And those times, the county has stepped in and paid. The amount of $600 was established about 20 years ago, what the county has been paying our mortuaries. Mortuaries sent in a letter a short while back asking that be increased to 1,000 and a few other things. So we went through and proposed this amended, there was this change of the county code that would give the commissions that kind of flexibility to adjust that price in the future and to make sure that we're tightening up and not using county resources where we don't need to and making sure that the first responsibility always lies with family members on these.
Good to have that in policy. I don't know if it's totally part of this conversation, but you know, with those remains, once they're cremated, I mean, we probably need to figure out some sort of-
We need to address that because I talked to one of the local mortuaries here and they kind of confirmed what the county attorney has. They, in their back room, they have boxes of ashes. They just can't throw those ashes away. So a lot of these bodies, they go through the cremation process and they just put them in a box and stuff them in their back. We need to also, at some point, address kind of a finding, final resting place for these ashes.
Yeah, I kind of think we should, maybe once a year, open it up. The one thing that we need to do if we do that is make sure that we mark the grave with the names of the people because I know that they're having an issue at the State Mental Hospital where they had kind of a place where they buried people and then years later, they don't know exactly who's buried where and what. Where they're cremated, the remains, I think you could bury them kind of all in one area. I don't know how many graves you'd have to do, but anyway, I think it is something that needs to be addressed.
Our deputy county attorney's work on this ordinance and he did some research up in Salt Lake County. I followed up on that. Interestingly enough, I'm not sure if you know that the firm that received, single firm that they dealt with before, had its license actually revoked on them and it worked out quite messy. So I think keeping our options open where we can deal and work with all of our providers gives us the greatest flexibility. I'd make a motion for ordinance 2017-1110, an ordinance revising county's requirements and procedures for providing cremation services for unclaimed bodies and indigent.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the motion passes. Item three, consideration of resolution R-2017-2257, a resolution appointing a member to the Washington County Library Board. Commissioner Rensstrom?
Yes, so Sid Aken was our current chairman, actually, of the County Library. Unfortunately, due to some health issues, he will no longer be able to serve in that capacity and has since resigned from the board. Kelly Aken is his son. I've interviewed him and talked to him. He would like to fulfill his remaining portion of his father's term and maybe go on after that. The remaining portion of the term is only six months, so he'd be appointed for six months and then have to come back for any additional appointment. His family has been extremely generous to the library system. They, the family gave $50,000 for us to open the Hilldale Library. So I think it would be appropriate to appoint Kelly Aken to the remaining portion of his father's term, which is, like I said, six months, and then when it comes up again, we'll look at him again.
I'll second.
Yeah, totally support it. Aken's family's been a great advocate for the library and kind of sad to see Sid. He's kind of a mentor of mine, so. Well, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the motion passes. Item four, consideration of resolution R-2017-2258, a resolution appointing board members to the Pine Valley Local District.
Mr. Chairman, the Pine Valley Local District provides key service in Pine Valley where they've delegated some law enforcement functions. They meet as a board and they currently contracting with the Washington County Sheriff's Office. The board is really functioning very well. The chairman's term is Fred Northington. His term of office has expired. He's only served one term. I would move that we reappoint Fred Northington. We also had an opportunity to interview a couple of other applicants for the other open seat and both were extremely well-qualified. I would put forward the name at this time of Robert Dally to fill the other open position.
Very good.
And those terms would expire on December 31st, 2021.
Very good. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Item five, consideration of resolution R-2017-2259, a resolution appointing board membership to the Pine Valley Special Service District.
Again, Mr. Chairman, the Pine Valley Special Service District provides fire protection services for the Pine Valley area. And again, Robert Dally and Claude Codding both applied for the two positions that are open. We had a chance to visit and meet with them and I would recommend that the name Robert Dally, Claude Codding, be submitted and approved as board members of the Pine Valley Special Service District.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the motion passes. Item six, consideration of resolution R-2017-2260, a resolution reappointing board member to the Angel Springs Special Service District. Let's see, Commissioner Cox, it looks like you're there, too.
Yep, I'll do that. Mr. Chairman, Mike Elmer has been serving on the board and comes with a recommendation from the remainder of the board that he be reappointed. He's willing to serve. The Angel Springs Special Service District provides culinary and potable water to the district. So I would move to reappoint Mike Elmer.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, the motion passes. Item seven, consideration of resolution R-2017-2261, a resolution reappointing members to the Washington County Weed Board. Commissioner Rensstrom?
Yeah, I kind of took the lead on this one. First of all, I really think we need to change the name of the board. The County Weed Board has been, we really need to change it to like the Washington County Noxious Plant. Anyways, but we can deal with that issue later. But basically, this is a board that we had to set up years and years ago to deal with noxious weeds in the county. The three people that are currently serving on it that are up for reappointment are Matt Spandlove, Victor Iverson, Clay Campbell. I know one of these persons, individuals a little bit better than the other two because he sits next to me, but-
Matt Spandlove is the newly elected virgin.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's right, that's right. So these individuals have been serving. I did contact staff over there. They say they have been attending the meetings and adding really good input. And so I would make a motion that we reappoint Matt Spandlove, Victor Iverson, and Clay Campbell for a term that will expire on December 31st, 2021.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I will say that this board is set up by state code and I tried to get out of it, but a commissioner has to serve on it. Anyway. Item six, consideration of resolution 2017-2261, a resolution establishing Washington County Commission as the governing authority-
2262.
62, as a governing authority for Rockville Springdale Fire Protection District. I think everybody here came to hear who was gonna be appointed to the library board.
Yeah, probably so.
So at any rate, we'll go ahead with this, with this resolution and just to kind of start this off. It's not a public hearing, but obviously a lot of you have come to hear and to talk. And so if it's okay, I'll kind of start this off and then Commissioner Rensstrom and Commissioner Cox can go both speak to the issue. At that time, we would like to kind of balance this conversation. So we were thinking if three individuals talked for three minutes, you know, opposing the resolution and if there was three that had neutral comments or in support of the resolution, we could kind of give them three minutes. And we could kind of just play it by ear, but just so you know, it's not a public hearing, but we do want public input. We just don't want to be here all night. And so hopefully, we can kind of go that way. I do want to commend everybody's civility and you've been very quiet and so time to have a good discussion. And I think part of, part of this is about information and, you know, sharing information. So hopefully, we can kind of get that out. First of all, just talking about the process and under state code, the county is responsible for fire suppression and emergency services. And then that, that authority is delegated, as it was in the mid-'80s, to this Fire District from this board. And the board is, has been serving and been doing a good job. Fire has changed a lot. I grew up in Hurrican. I can remember going to Hurrican Elementary School. The city office was where the museum is at now. They had one of those sirens that used to go off at noon one time. If there was a fire, it'd go off 10 times and then everybody'd rush to the fire, to the fire station and go fight fire or get in the ambulance. And of course, things have changed a lot. It's important that we have highly trained and highly skilled individuals, both to fight fires and to also provide medical service and we appreciate their effort. There has been some discussion. We've read all the emails that you've all sent. We've appreciated that communication. There has been some concern about, about a voice elected. We would like to, I would like to just remind everybody that if the commission becomes a board, we are an elected body and we would continue, all meetings would continue to be public and transparent following all of the highest order of transparency. We also understand very much that we have a unique district. You have a community of 800 people who is supporting a population that can fluctuate between 4,000 to 16,000 in any given day. This puts a lot of stress on, on the district to financially pay for it. And of course, there's been a robust discussion about taxation, about standby fees. And, you know, I think that's something that we need to continue to have. So let's kind of get, as far as, I'm speaking for myself, as far as why, why I would personally support this move. First of all, I think, I think we do need to have a robust discussion about the budget. We are at the end of the year. The district needs a budget passed and I can't support the current suggestion on taxation. And I do think, like I've already mentioned, that there's already a lot of stress in this district on how we're paying for it. And I think we should continue to have that discussion. So we have to find a way to man the, to man the station up there 24 hours a day with highly qualified people. And we need to do that for our current budget. I do personally have some concerns about management issue. And I think, I think what I would like to, what I, what I think we desperately need to do is, is have cross-trained employees there. We need to have, the citizens deserve the right to have people that are on call, not on, or on duty, not necessarily just on call. And so I do have some, some management concerns there. And there is some concern over, over politics. And there's always politics in everything, but, but politics being too involved in, in this, in this district. And for quite a few years, the entire time that I've been a commissioner, we've heard complaints and concerns from, from citizens about the district. And I think that a more neutral board would, would allow a more honest discussion about, about where we're gonna go in the future. So with that, there's been some discussion, okay, Commissioners, if you're gonna do this, what are you really, you know, what's your thoughts? And I'm just gonna speak for myself. I would support, if we became the board, this would be what would happen. We would establish, you know, open meetings. We'd publish the agenda, the meetings. We would then meet as the board. I would support entering into a contract negotiation with Hurrican Valley. And then as we, as we establish that, I still, we need to have a discussion about how this unique district pays for itself. And what I mean by that is, is we need to have a funding model that works. You know, these, you have property tax right now and then you have these standby fees. And especially when you talk about citizens, you guys are bearing a pretty heavy weight up there. But at the same time, you know, we probably need to talk about kind of a special assessment district. But these are discussions that I think we should have kind of down the road. Health and safety will always be first and your voice will always be a part of this process, even if, you know, this motion passes. So with that, I think I've expressed a little bit of-
Is it okay if I just make a kind of a clarifying point?
Yeah.
So that everybody's aware. So open meetings laws apply to any government body.
Yeah.
And as the commissioners are considering tonight, whether they, they take the power back from an administrative control board to be the oversight body. And, and it was, it's completely legitimate for, for a commissioner in discussing that to say, these are the things that I'm thinking of going forward. I'm gonna advise that the commissioners are careful not to get into any back and forth about, here are my future plans. This is what I think should happen. Because that would be appropriate in a board or in a meeting where they've noticed up a meeting of the board for the Fire District if they pass this resolution. And so those things would all be considered and at that time. And as you guys come up and give your comments, you know, obviously you're free to talk about whatever you want to talk about. But those things will be addressed later meetings if it passes.
And you know, there has been, you know, some very valid questions in some of the emails and communications that some of you have sent us, like, hey, why, why didn't you say this last Wednesday at the, at the hearing? And, and part of it is these different hats, roles, and times that we have. That hearing was very much not our meeting. It was not our place to, to say that. And, and even now, I ask Eric how far I could even say because deliberation regarding this district would need to be inside a board meeting when I, if I was part of that board, so. Anyway, thank you for that clarification. That's why we keep you around, Eric, to make sure we always dot our Ts and cross our Is, whatever. Commissioner Rensstrom?
So I share this with the audience because I'm hoping that the people that come up and comment will address these issues and that you don't think I'm preaching to you. But I want to share with you a few things I've heard that has caused me a lot of concern. So the last couple of months, and I echo what Commissioner Iverson said. My whole time on this board, I've, people will come and express concerns and this Special Service District is a child of the, of the county. And recent court actions and even the county auditor will come to the county if a Special Service District's not doing certain things. And so I do believe there's a responsibility there and a legal duty. But here's, here's my concern. So when you address them or comment them, I appreciate it. Um, but here's, here's my concern. So when you address them or comment them, I appreciate it. Um, first of all, what I'm concerned about is right now, today, the district is running in the red. They, they amended their budget to basically start taking money out of savings to finish this year. And so as of today, there's not a plan to fix being in the red. And then that's a great concern to me. And the only plan that's really come forward is, hey, we want these significant property tax increases. And we want to double our standby fees. And a, as an individual that ran on limited government, limited taxation, uh, that's a, a big concern of mine. Another concern that's come up and, and I am hoping somebody can address this is that Hurricane Valley has reached out to Springdale, uh, Rockville Fire District and, and approached them saying, hey, when your ambulance is on a call and driven down to the hospital, we'd be happy to reposition one of our ambulances just up in Virgin at no cost to the district. So if there was another call that came in during that time, that, that we could respond a little bit quicker to that. And, and the district basically came back and says, no, we don't want you to do that. And so I'm concerned that we have a district that doesn't want to play well with others essentially. Um, that they kind of want to do their own thing. And, and that concerns me because one of the things I think is great about our community is, is that we do work together. If there is an emergency, we usually generally respond. So if another district's trying to help out at no cost to the district, and they're saying, no, we don't want to even play or, or work with you guys. I mean, that's a concern that we, we, we might have that. Um, the, the other thing that I found very interesting in a lot of comments that we've received, and I've been, I think I spent the last two days, in fact, last night about ten o'clock in bed, I was responding to emails. Uh, some of the people that have expressed um, basically pleading with us to step into this district, they've expressed, they would, they leaving the comments saying, please don't tell anybody about this because I'm scared of the district. Um, that makes me very, very concerned that somebody would say that. When a citizen comes to me and says, I'm scared of the district, and, and I heard some chuckling about that, there's a perception there. Now, you could say that's not the case, but the fact is, is you have citizens right now in this community that are scared to call you guys in. That, that to me is a huge red flag. And you can blame them, and you can blame everybody else, but that should never be the case. No one should ever feel concerned about calling nine-one-one, have our officers respond, or a fire district respond. If there's, if that, if there's a misconception there, that has to be fixed either way. But that is a huge concern of mine right now, um, that I don't know how to, to deal with. Um, then the last thing is a lot of people have said to me, where did this come up? Where, where did this start? Did the cities bring this up? Did the um, did individuals uh, come to you? And that's not the case. Where this really came up is the county commissioners are the ones that have to, to work with all this property tax. So I have a special district that's running in the red now. They came to the county saying, hey, we're running in the red. Here's this huge tax increase. Kind of fix it. And that, and that's a concern. So that's, that was basically the district itself is kind of initiated all this discussion and what's to do here. And so tho, those are kind of the things that have been bouncing around my head. I, I've emailed lots of people. I've expressed in my emails, hey, could you help me out here? What are you concerned about? Had really good comments both ways. Um, but, but I am very curious to see what happens today.
This is tough conversation, but I want to express my appreciation to each and every one of you that took the time and made the trip, come down and speak with us and share your concerns. I too have read the emails. Been a little bit disappointed with the tone of some of them. Others have been, even though they, they carried a message, and they did it very professionally and uh, it really got my attention and made me read it. I see Mayor Leach and uh, Chair here, and I appreciate the hard work that they do in their communities. And so I see this all with a little different lens. And partly my lens is colored by thirty years of service in the emergency services in one capacity or another. Uh, nineteen years as the Emergency Services Director for the county. When I began uh, even as a volunteer in the eighties, at about the time that the fire district was created, volunteerism, as uh, the chairman said, was, was just routine and standard. Uh, small departments were able to uh, attract a lot of volunteers. And a lot of times that I think was because many of them had agrarian jobs. They worked agriculture. They had their own businesses. And they had the ability to leave that to respond. Uh, hand in hand with that was an almost total absence in standards for first responders. And so they were very de minimis. And I also like to recognize Hurricane Valley Chief and Assistant Chief here. Uh, but over time, OSHA and uh, other agencies have mandated standards and training that have made it more and more difficult for volunteers adequately participate. And so what I see happening with Rockville and Springdale is a shift in demographics, loss of volunteers, uh, eight hundred three taxpayers, a little over a thousand parcels, and park visitation upwards of four million visitors a year, which poses some really, really unique challenges for the district. So how do we deal with them? Uh, you know, I, I frankly share the concern that with a proposed budget of one point three million dollars, that's half of the budget for fire protection and EMS that Hurricane City, of Hurricane, Virgin, Tocqueville, Leeds, Sky Ranch, Cliff Dwellers, and all of the incorporated county spend on fire protection. They spend two point six million. And so for that little teeny group to be spending or proposing to spend one half of the amount that's serving a population of forty thousand people over a much larger area and several fire stations makes me question whether it's or not, there are some efficiencies that are being missed. And uh, I, I find that I just can't wrap my head around spending that much money. Uh, and I think there has to be a better and more efficient way of doing it. Yet on the other hand, I will tell you that I am disturbed by speed that this has come together. And, and really how we've uh, caught the service district, uh, I think a little bit unawares. I, I wish that somehow we could wind the clock back and communicate more openly and closely with them and share those concerns, because it's ultimately, it's your money that, that, that I have concerns over. When I see a single family home paying three hundred dollars for standby fees and taxes with a primary exemption, that's a lot of money. And uh, and if there's a way that it can be done and have it cost you folks less money with people in your station, not responding from Hurricane, but in your station and not on standby, on duty, in the station, working on the equipment, making sure that things are ready to go. So that when that call comes in, they're able to hit the ground and roll. And at the same time, if we need to shift resources uh, back up that way, uh, you know, frankly, I think that's feasible. And so I've talked with Hurricane Valley to find out, get an idea how much that would cost. And I think it can currently be done within the budget currently have. And so I'm really going to be interested in hearing from you this afternoon, whether it's acceptable for you to double how much you pay for fire protection services if you could get a lower ISO and faster response and have greater resources available to you for less money. Uh, but I, I want to know that. I have not. I'm, I'm one that's, that has not made my mind up today on how I'm going to vote. Uh, I want to hear from you. But understand that, my understanding, that most, if several, if not most of your first responders right now already work for Hurricane Valley for their full-time jobs. It's not like you're going to have different faces and different people up there always. I mean, you know, things don't have to change that much. But uh, I, I, I hope you'll address some of my concerns, questions, and, and help me understand whether or not price is important for you, because frankly, if it's not important to you, it will be less important to me. Uh, so that's where I'm at.
Very good. Uh, just by the show of hands, who's really excited about uh, making a comment today? We have one. Okay, there we have four. Everybody just raised five. I think a couple of you already raised your hand. So I think the gentleman right next to you, chief, i- if uh,
What if we just two minutes each?
Yeah, two minutes. Yeah. So, so let's go ahead and just start, um, yeah.
Void redundancy.
Yeah, avoid redundancy, please. Just come up, state your name and um, and uh, uh, we'll just kind of, we'll kind of informally just try to give you a little sign if, you know.
Okay, I'll uh, Ryan Ballard, I'm the current chief of Rockville Springdale Fire. Um, I appreciate you letting me speak up here today. I realize it isn't a public hearing. But uh, I would have to say first off, I believe the commission is uninformed on how our, how our district is set up and how it works. And I have to share um, Commissioner Cox's uh, concerns with the speed at which this is going. I haven't been talked to by any of the commission on this, on any of our, any of our operations, any of our personnel, how our district is set up, how it works. I feel that that would have been a proper thing to do. And I think I could have answered a lot more of your questions uh, beforehand and straightened out some misconceptions that you may have um, before that. All of our per, personnel or a good portion of them do not work for Hurricane. Uh, people are at the station. Um, they are paid on call. It's just a, a formality. They're paid on call. They're on shift. They don't respond from Hurricane. They respond from within the district, fire and EMS. They are highly trained. They are cross-trained.
How close to the station are they required to stay?
Within this, within the district.
District means?
And a lot of times they'll have a fire truck or an ambulance or another piece of equipment with them.
So, so all of them are cross-trained?
Not all, but a good portion of them are cross-trained, yes. Yep, at different levels at this time. Um, we do have.
Could you tell us a little about your, your certifications and?
My certifications? I, I've been in the fire service for about twenty-five years. Um, started with the district volunteering at eighteen. Uh, went through a bunch of, uh, a bunch of training with the federal government. Um, I have, uh, I have a lot of experience. I don't have a ton of paper. Uh, that was right out there in front when district decided to hire me. Um, I, I can't compete with a lot of guys when it comes to their paperwork, but I do have a lot of experience. And uh, I was chief before uh, for about seven years of the district, uh, left for a couple of years and then came back as a full-time chief.
Firefighter too.
Firefighter, yep, yep. That's my main goal. I'm not an administrator by any means or a politician. I uh, I pull hose with my guys. I load hose with my guys. I am, I do everything they do. Um, it's a little bit different than other, other departments. Um, I find this troubling. This whole thing is troubling to me. But you guys have been talking to a neighboring agency.
It's our right to do that. So just understand that.
But I'm, I feel, I feel um, like it would have been more prudent to talk to me as well.
Well.
You know, and.
I, I, I support that actually.
Yeah.
But don't throw arrows and I won't throw rocks.
No, I'm not throwing arrows, but it, it's a fact that I think, uh, I, I think it would have been more proper to speak to me as well, as not just uh, not just other departments, not my department. So I would appreciate the, I would love to have conversations with you guys on this. Um, always have. As far as people scared to call nine-one-one, I, I have to disagree with that. Um, for the most part, our people, they may not like our tax stuff, but when it comes to it, they uh, are very supportive of our, of our district as far as I know.
I think that, I think the comment was more like, not emergency service, but they would be afraid to voice their opinion publicly.
And, and you know, I, I have to disagree with that as well, because we have open meetings. We encourage people to come. Uh, we don't have a lot of participation. Uh, the meeting that you attended is a snapshot in time. There uh, there usually aren't people, that many people there, if any. And people are always welcome. We're always there. And uh, we listen to people. We really do.
Well.
Any other questions?
We appreciate your, your comment. And, and if this was to go forward, I mean, if, you know, then, you know, it would be a smooth transition. There would be a lot of, it would be a discussion. It would be.
That's what I think.
It's not like we're, we're, you know, breaking the bottle today, just if this resolution passes. Basically, you already have a board that is going to be down one member in January. They didn't have an election because nobody filed for it. So I mean, there is some, you know, there's a lot of conversation that can be had down, down the road. But I, I, I appreciate your sentiments. You've articulated very well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, if just other people that raised their hand just want to come to the mic is, since I don't know your first name, then I'll just uh, hope you remember you raised your hand.
Your name.
Yeah.
So I'm Jerry Porter. Um, uh, work with uh, Chief Ballard too. Um, I'm also working on my fire certs in EMS right now. It's currently is Rockville Springdale Fire Department. So I second pretty much what Chief Ballard has mentioned at all. Um, I know very little about what's going on because it's kind of like a hush-hush thing. So what we get from our chief is what we understand from him. So I just like to second, I've never been to one of these, so it's kind of interesting. So sorry if I'm a little skittish.
Hey, you're doing a good job. Keep it up.
First of all, uh, working in Springdale, um, the on-call thing is, is pretty much everybody there is there at the station. When our pager rolls that goes, we are ready to go. We listen to the page. We get a firm description of what it is, depending on what dispatch says, and then we go. Um, construction wise, yeah, that makes a, a big deal for us to get to response time from one side to the other side. Um, one thing you didn't mention is that Hurricane to cover when RSD is out. Now, as far as I understand, we've never been asked that at all. We've never been told about that to say, hey, can Hurricane cover? We just go and do our thing and come back. And if our page goes off again, we head on back. So uh, that would be nice if actually someone else from a different board or whatever board it is said, yeah, that's the protocol that Hurricane covers from when you guys get paged and transported out. I, I, you know, and the second thing is where did this start from? I have no idea where it started from, but in the beginning, when I started six years ago, and I attended a couple of the meetings, and things were brought up and someone said, don't talk about it. It's kind of a hush-hush question. It's, it makes me wonder what, who's really behind all of this. So a lot of things that I hear um, start from, where did it start from? I don't know why the public would be scared, because we're, as a department, we're really quick. There's maybe a couple of guys, as Chief said, that respond from home, but they have a vehicle. And they're right on scene before us usually if it's on Rockville's side. If not, they're right behind us if it's in Springdale's side. Um, you know, I guess it, I guess it starts of who is funding, where our funds come from, who has the say of where our funds are, are taken from, where they go. Uh, that's my biggest thing. So um, again, I, I don't want to, I don't want to repeat everything that Chief said, but that's where I kind of wrote all my notes from is just saying, where did this start from? It'd be interesting to know where it started from and why is it such hush-hush things about?
Are you talking about the process that we're right in right now?
All the process that we've talked about that you've mentioned so far, you know, um, that's what, that's what I wrote down and that's what we're talking about.
So if we're talking, I'll try to answer that question real quick if I understand the question, which is how did the resolution that we're, you know, talking about tonight end up on the agenda? You know, it's, it's a series of things, but it's primarily um, built around the budget.
Right.
And the, the recommended uh, tax increases and, and also the missing person on the board and, and but mainly the budget. It's mainly budgetary. And, and the reason that the speed of it is, is we have to have a budget in place.
I understand that.
And so if, if the commission can't approve a tax increase and we have concerns about the budget, we need to be in a place where we can vote on that budget before the end of the year.
Right.
At least for me. I'm speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for the commission.
And you said this is not a, I understand this is not a public hearing, but again, I've never been to one of these, but understanding that where did it start from the budget-wise? And that's where we're kind of at right now is the budget-wise. So.
For me, for me, it's budget. Okay. And standby fees are not technically property tax, but if they're not paid, they are lean against the property that is collected the same way as a property tax, and it will appear on your property tax bill. So in my mind, it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck. So standby fee in my mind is a tax. And so in my mind, I'm thinking, are we giving? And so, in my mind, I'm thinking, are we giving taxpayers of your community the very most responsible form of service for the money they're paying? And, and, and one more comment that I will make. I will be the first one cheering for and supporting wholeheartedly if Mayor Leach, Mayor Smith, would like to run these as community fire departments, because that totally, within their community, uh, charters do that. And I believe that government, that governs closest to the people governs best. And so, I, with all my heart, with the board, Rockville, Springdale doing that. If the county is going to be involved, and even though you think you're in a nice district, if, if you've been here for the whole time, you've heard us make a lot of, uh, appointments to fire and special service district boards, because those are all children of the county. And so, anything that happens in those districts come back to roost with the county.
Sorry to interrupt you. I have to, I have to agree with Chief Ballard is that, again, again, there's nothing, when I ask about questions and that, about what's going on with our department, where we're going, what we're doing, Chief is open to us very much about what we're going, as much as he knows. And then there's other things that he can't tell us because he doesn't know. And then we hear about things such as this, you know?
All three of us can't talk with each other at the same time either, and so we don't know. That's why it's on an agenda. That's why you're all here, and I appreciate the aim. But, but the best of my knowledge, the decision hasn't been made yet, but it's on our agenda for...
Right, right, I understand that, so...
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, somebody else want to speak? Let's see.
Stu.
Stu, and then, uh, fine lady in the back, then the other fine lady in the back.
Hi.
Hi, Stu.
How are you?
I remember you from...
From the meeting? Um, first off, I'd like to say that if I were interviewing a chief, Ryan Ballard, I don't care what paperwork he has. He is a very well-qualified fire chief. I've seen him out in calls on my properties, on other properties in town, and I have one hundred percent faith when our department is called, that, that we're in safe hands. I've always wondered how they're gonna find me in the apartment I live that's behind my office and hidden. I figured they'd figure out where I'm at if I had a problem. I'm merely here because when the district set up standby fees, they weighed them heaviest on businesses. And I was okay with that, because we have tourists, and we, we bring in more money. But then when they start doubling them, okay, we're hit doubly hard. Now, the advantage to the county, and I said this at the beginning of the meeting last time, that if, if our, our district can show me that they're competitive, I would choose them any day. But when it comes down to it, is this fix, or this raise in taxes even gonna solve our problem for five years down the road? I don't believe it is, because we had a huge hike a few years ago. So, if we were able to fiscally, and I, I had a chat with Lucy the other day, right after the meeting, and I said, if I were in your position, I would come here with a proposal, and how we can handle this financially. I'm sure this board would listen, and I'm sure this board would take it into consideration if you laid out a plan how we can fiscally fix our problems, because it's gotta be a different mechanism in order to make it work. It's true, we have four million people come through Zion. And one of the advantages of being associated with the county is, because our hotels in Springdale are hit harder, and our, and our restaurants are hit harder, well, it's, uh, hotels in Leverkin, and Virgin, and Hurricane, and everywhere else, that's also contributing those cars up in Springdale. So, maybe instead of the twelve or fifteen hotels that are in Springdale getting hit with the big burden, maybe we spread it out over all tourist hotels, that people are coming and spending their, their day in Zion, creating this havoc for us. So, I mean, that's my approach. I have nothing against our district. Like I said, I, I, I've, I've been in this town for forty-three years. Yeah, I have some people that don't like me, and I haven't figured out why. But, but the bottom line is, I'll tell it the way it is. It's, the bottom line, when, when the fire dollars become a line item on my tax return, there's a problem. I'm paying more taxes than a guy in Hurricane, just because of property value, but he's getting more services than I am. So, if they can figure it out, I'd be one hundred percent backed them, and I've told them that. And, and, and I've, and I've approached them, and the last time they raised it, I was, I said, please, sit down with me. This is, I'm a numbers guy. This is what I, I like to do. I've been more than happy to help, but I just, no one has ever taken me up on it.
Well, I appreciate that. Um, and you addressed something that probably need, desperately needs to be addressed in the coming years, which is, how do you finance, you know, your emergency services when you have the burden of four million people a year? I think that's a discussion that actually the county commission can address more easily than the current board, because this is a discussion that almost needs to go to the state legislature, and, and we need to really start evaluating and talking about it in, 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 in a more robust way. But I will say that I, I don't think the solution is to continue to raise taxes.
Right.
It's gotta be, other words, we've gotta balance this with our residents and with the businesses. But anyway, well, that's kind of...
I personally feel that the businesses have the greatest burden to bear, because they reap...
But we also understand this. We are also the biggest contributors to every other little special district, and every other special thing in the county. So, so, you know, the thing is, there's just no control over, we're, we're, we're hit here, we're hit here. I mean, if someone wants to come and sit in my books and see, I mean, it's a huge burden and huge debt. I mean, we're the ones that are, that are providing the reason that trash trucks come up there, and, and the costs are low, and, and, and the reason fiber was put in town, and, and all these other amenities, because we're the ones spending the big bucks to do this. So, so, look, I don't have a problem spending money on fire. I just think that there's gotta be another mechanism, so that it's not such a huge... It's literally, if it were to go through as proposed, it's more than a third of my property tax bill per property.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Stu. Appreciate all of you's comments. Uh, let's, let's see, um, I got two people in the back there. Um, we can accommodate everybody if you'll all just take about not very long. Uh, we have two of the wonderful ladies in the back that have been raising their hands since the beginning. And it's my fault. I'm not giving anybody signals, but, uh, maybe I'll have to. You know, I don't want to be rude, but...
And thanks for the wonderful. That's good.
Please tell us, uh, your name.
Uh, Louise Excel, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak long, because I communicated with you yesterday, uh, with a letter, and I, I do want to thank you, and I want to especially thank Commissioner Rehnquist, because he responded to me. We had a little email conversation, which I appreciated very much. Um, lifetime resident of Springdale, served on the Springdale Town Council, uh, as well as the Fire District Board. So, I kind of have seen things from both. Um, a couple of points I would like to make. Um, if, uh, and I think you, I think you will all appreciate this, given your, um, sort of political ideology. Local, um, control, local authority and governance works best. We, um, we really should retain our, um, uh, our Fire District Board locally. Um, I think it's important also to know, to keep in mind, that when you talk about the size of the budget, um, and, and you juxtaposition that against a population of eight hundred people, that's so inaccurate, because of the four million people that we serve. Um, that, that, that little town, um, of Springdale, well, and Rockville to a large extent, because they do have a few, uh, transient lodging facilities. There are upwards of ten thousand people in that community on a given busy day. And, and it's the, it's our responsibility to provide emergency services. We have, um, a lot of lodging, a lot of, um, restaurants that deserve rapid response if there is a fire, rapid response if there is, uh, medical urgency. And it's not that, that, um, we wouldn't love to, to work with the Hurricane District. It's the distance. It's the...
They would be there. They would be positioned there.
That's what we don't know. That's the uncertainty of this, because nothing has been...
They would be right there.
Because nothing has been transparent, because it was our...
Nothing's been decided, so...
Yeah, that's a, that's a problem. Yeah, nothing has been decided.
Because it, I, I mean, the idea of, you know, telling a mom that she has to, that a child who is choking has to wait for twenty minutes for an ambulance from Hurricane is not...
Wouldn't work.
Is not something that's gonna work.
Yeah, that's, that's never, that, that... Just so that everybody knows, your fire station would stay where it's at. It would be manned twenty-four-seven, by, in some cases, the same people. Uh, that doesn't change. As a former, now, you're not currently on the Springdale City Councilor.
I'm not. I, I term limited myself.
I did see the Springdale City Manager back there, but a question that I've got. The legislature passed a one percent fee that's bundled into the transient room tax, specifically earmark, earmark for the cities that can levy it, and Springdale levies it,
Mm-hmm.
for public safety mitigation and response. And one hundred percent of your fee is going to the Fire Department.
No, no, no. Ambulance, ambulance service.
Hundred and twenty thousand, I think, has gone over.
Ambulance service.
But the mayor, the mayor, in, in the truth in taxation, said that the district can't even count on that. And so, that really concerns me, because it's, I agree with you in government closest to the people governs best. I think Rockville and Springdale are the, are really the entities that should be having the discussion on how these services are provided, because that is government closest to the people.
It's, and it's, you mentioned that it should be a discussion, and this, this is the last thing I'm gonna say, 'cause I'm really taking up a lot of time, but you mentioned that it should be a discussion with the Utah State Legislature, that perhaps there should be some funding mechanism for these very things. Well, there is. There's the resort sales tax. There's the transient room tax, which we are allowed to collect in Springdale, and have been doing for some time.
But I would argue that, that, that under state code, they come with quite a few restrictions. I don't know that there's certain percentages of those that couldn't be...
The one percent the city collects.
The city, but it's a part that the county collects.
County can't use it.
We couldn't give you any of our TRT.
But, but the TRT tax in Springdale...
Because of state code right now, the way it's written, it has certain earmarks. It can only be, sorry.
The one percent can be used.
It can be, and, 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 and it should be, but that, that's a problem. That's Springdale's problem. And to a small extent, Rockville's problem. Uh, and, and it's a problem that they refuse to, uh, reckon with. But there is a way to take the burden off the homeowners and off the business owners to some extent, and still fund, um, our Fire District, and it's, that's one of the mechanisms that's there.
Okay.
Thanks, Louise.
Yes, let's, uh, the lady in the back, and then, then our...
That's our chair, Lucy.
Chairman, chairman after that, so... Yeah, right.
My name is Bernadette Cole, and yes, I came right from work. I work for Intermountain Healthcare. I'm a registered nurse. Um, I actually wrote notes, so I could help myself. Uh, my husband is not here, because he's in the U S Virgin Islands helping with hurricane recovery. He's a retired park ranger, and I feel he might be partly responsible for this, because when he joined the Fire Department, he would say, Ryan, how are you gonna keep guys when you're paying us nine fifty an hour? And it's true. I mean, he has twen- thirty years of experience. He's an advanced EMT. And so, he, that conversation started, so it did bump up to thirteen, which was like, okay, that's reasonable. He's also a retired park service, so the Springdale-Rockville Fire Department has a really great relationship with the park service, and often, those calls at three in the morning are the Springdale ambulance going to the lodge inside the park, for whatever reason. So, I just want you to know that there's already a, a great system in place. My husband works a, however many shifts he's scheduled when he's around. When he's not on, on duty, he's also got the pager, so he's showing up as a volunteer. So, that's the beauty of a local, again, I just wanted to reiterate that. And, um, as a homeowner, when I saw the numbers, I was like, whoa, whoa, whoa. So, but I do think that what you saw last week, all that, was just us saying, wow. And that's the same thing that happened with the bridge. So, yeah, you get our attention when you start talking about our, the bridge, or raising our taxes so much, and that's when people do show up. But I think what you didn't see was people saying, okay, are you for or against the Fire District? So, and I think if you had also asked that question, everybody would have resoundingly said yes, for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank your husband for his service.
Thank you very much for allowing us to do this in a meeting that is not a public hearing. Unfortunately, I'm not a hundred percent prepared for the three minutes I have. I'll, I'll try to be direct. Commissioner Reinstrom, you said something that concerned you. It also concerns me as a RSFPD current chair. Um, the fact that in July, we approved a wage increase from nine fifty an hour to thirteen dollars an hour. We did that as a board, knowing that we would have to pull reserves in order to, to pay those people. We did that at the request of our chief, and he asked for it as a stop-loss measure. In the summer, we lost a few of our personnel that were residing in the district. As you know, need to be redundant here, but it's expensive to live in Springdale. Um, so we did that. We know. We know we're in the red. We know it's a problem. We are in a crisis right now, trying to meet the needs of the impact of the tourism, and the lack of volunteers, and all those other things that have already been said. We came to you, two of our board members, with a tentative budget that we passed. We created a budget that we felt, at the time, met our 2018 needs perfectly. All the huge challenges we are facing, we threw all of them in that budget. We came to you guys. It's justified. This is where we're at. What can you do? We've never raised property taxes before, and you're right. Standby fees, property taxes, it doesn't matter. It comes out of the same pocket. We don't like facing the residents at, whenever we do, at the gas station and the post office box, telling us, what are you guys doing? When is it gonna stop? We are aware of the people that are on fixed incomes. We listen to those people. So, it's not an easy thing for us as a board to determine, or, or try to come to that conclusion of raising those fees. Um, we wanted to approach it from a property tax, because we hadn't done that before. Our property taxes right now, as you know, are one of the lowest in the county. When it, on our, on your property tax bill, what RSFD gets is low. But when citizens saw the tax notice that said their taxes would go up by two hundred and sixty-one percent, that was alarming. And we were forced to put that on our agenda. We were forced to work with a tentative budget that we knew was too much. I know that. You can read my public statements in every board meeting. What are we doing here, board? We need to cut back. Well, let's see what the commissioners will give us. Let's not cut ourselves short. Let's go ahead. We'll put in our max tax increase from point zero zero one nine five to point zero zero seven zero five. Let's, let's ask. We had hoped to have better communication with you prior to this public hearing. We had hoped that we would have had some idea of where we could reasonably expect to go with the tax increase. Had we known that number, we could have plugged it into our budget. Then we, as a board, would have to sit down and say, what can we stomach now in standby fees? And there would have been a discussion about that, I can guarantee you. And there would have been a lot of varying points of view on that. And it comes down to, you know, it's not, we're not a business. This is another misconception. We're not a business. We're not trying to make a profit. We're trying to save lives. We're trying to provide the best safety we can for our guys that go out on these calls, in addition to the public, and the structures, and all of those things. So, when we start to talk about cutting budgets, you start to accept a certain level of increased risk. If you don't have coverage, that means something. If you don't pay our people what they need, that means something. And so the decisions are difficult when it comes to cutting the budget, but we're prepared to do it. Our chief told us, this is what I need. But we have to come back as the adults in the room and say, sorry, you can't have that right now because we don't have the money and about the money. And I'll wrap it up here with my final and last point. When we first came to you, we didn't know you very well, you, our father, our creator.
Oh, no, 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 no. Let's not get that far.
Nothing, nothing religious intended, but I do feel a little bit like a child here, asking you for guidance. You were one of our last hopes. We know we can't continue getting the money from the people, even people like Stu Ferber, who has all the money in the world. We just can't do that. We, we can't place that burden anymore. We need to look for alternative funding sources. You said that you had a toolbox and that there might be potential funding avenues that you had at your disposal that we don't have as a special service district. So what I'd like to know is, can we work together on this? Can we keep our current board, or at least a local board, work with you, share your toolbox? What can you do that we can't do? Do we really have to go away?
Can I, can I speak to that?
Yeah, but I'm not quite done yet.
Haven't got to making any motions yet.
I know.
But I personally would like a little more time. I personally would like to have these conversations, but I think they'd be hard conversations. And, and because we're really close on a year, I need to know how pliable the board is. I've got some experience and I've got, I mean, we, we deal with special service districts. We really do. And so I have specific questions. For example, why can't you have two people on full-time, cross-trained, and others on call instead of four all the time? Hurricane Valley ran for a long time with just four people serving that whole valley on. These are hard questions that have easy answers in my mind, and I'm not sure that your board has addressed them.
Actually, our chief has the best answer to that, and I would defer to him on that. And I know I'm running out of time here.
No, you're fine. You're the chair.
You deserve the time.
Well, for tonight anyway, for a few more minutes perhaps.
Yeah.
I just, you know, I, and I'm, I'm speaking for myself here. The board, there are members of our board here, they're probably going to be livid that I've gotten up and chosen to speak out so, so honestly. I'm speaking for myself as one member of the board. When we first, when we had discussions with you, and when I spoke with you personally a little bit the other day, Commissioner Cox, I, I felt that we had some common ground with respect to these, these dollars and where the money needs to come from. And we hear loud and clear from our community, it's enough, and, and we understand that. So 1% TRT tax that is going to the municipalities, we get a portion of that because of an agreement that we have with the town of Springdale, which, as you know, is going to be expiring. We are concerned about that. But we've also been assured or given some level of, of, of faith and goodwill, if you will, from the town of Springdale, that they're not going to leave us high and dry. They clearly care about public safety by virtue of the fact, uh, the, the budget that they have for their police department. I have to believe that they care about public safety, and they're going to continue to give us some kind of financial support. I don't know what it is. It's not my place to, to determine that in their budget. But the money, the money is there. We, the resort tax, the TRT that you get, the 4.25%.
Can't use a dialer.
But you also talked about the legislature. Why can't we, as a local board, along with our two mayors, along with the park superintendent, why can't we go to the legislature and begin to work on changing the laws that would loosen those strings on those tourism dollars? Why, there, it's not just Rockville-Springdale. There are many gateway communities that are heavily impacted by tur- we're suffering. We're in a crisis. We need dol- we need the big dollars.
I, yeah, I, that is a very long conversation. And it is one that, to be honest with you, I think the district would be more empowered with the county advocacy, but this is Pandora's box here. I mean, there are a lot of interests, and I know there's people that are shaking their head, and you just don't appreciate the politics of TRT. And, and I, but I do think that you're making the point that I have thought for a long time, is that we can't fund this district properly. I will say, in, in all due respect to the chief, I disagree. I think you need to have two very competent, full-time people on 24 hours a day. The minute that ambulance goes down, you move somebody back up. You constantly have service. I want to make sure that everybody understands, regardless of what happens today, the service and, and life and safety and the health and, and what this district has been committed to for the last 20 years is going to continue. If nothing, there's going to be no plugs pulled, there's going to be nothing like that. And, and regardless of whether you elected us or not, or voted for us or not, I guess is the term, we, you are, you are the public and we are the, the, the public representatives. I mean, so, so this idea that there's some sort of isolation just because you live 20 minutes up the river doesn't mean that, that we aren't, or just because the board changes doesn't mean that your input isn't valued or that we don't continue this dialogue. And, and I don't mean to sound aggressive to you.
No, no, I'm not taking it that way.
You, you've brought some very good points that I just, I felt like I had to say, look, local control is still there. Impacts of, of tourism absolutely has to be addressed. And, and this, well, I'll just say, you know, we have, we have a district similar to this in, in Damrin Valley. It's, it's just fine, you know, and, and it doesn't have to raise its taxes really high. And the reason why is it doesn't have 4 million people going through there. So the point is well taken. You've made the point very articulately. Wages, I don't blame you for raising those wages. Those wages are an insult.
Exactly.
You know, and so, but I do disagree that you need five people on ti- I would rather pay two people better than five people mediocre, you know? That's just me. I mean, but I'm just, that's more of a detail.
One little comment that I'd like the chair to weigh on. I don't know how $13 or $14 fixes it.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know.
It won't.
Without benefits and things like that, I don't know how that fixes that.
It won't.
So I think whatever plan we'd like to see work out would address that so that, that your responders are adequately compensated so you don't have a revolving door. Otherwise, you're stuck with training and all of that ongoing. But those are the hard conversations that I just haven't seen evidence of. And I look forward to an opportunity to engage with the board, find out how they could do that. Because simply going from $9 an hour to 10 or 11 or 13, that's where I think Stuart has, has hit the nail on the head. It, it's still not fixing the problem.
And we haven't even talked about benefits yet.
Right.
So that's obviously something else that's down the line. So clearly, whatever we do for 2018 is going to have to be a Band-Aid until we find money funding from outside of this community.
And that might be a very heavy lift.
So I, I just have a couple of questions because I, I respect the position you, and I really am, and you have really tried.
And by the way, you did a great job in your public hearing.
Yeah.
It was really hard not to answer questions and speak back.
So I think you're in a tough position because I guess my question is, is you said, okay, on our last budget, we had to do this. We didn't have a choice. There was no option. So how in the next three weeks, two weeks, or whatever, that, that's going to change? I, I don't see that, and so I.
I think that's what we need to see, is how can there be change?
And when you asked about how flexible the board is, again, I cannot speak for the board.
Exactly. We understand.
But we've probably, I know on my computer alone, there's probably 50 different drafts of this current budget with at least, the Excel chart goes out here with budgeting scenario, staffing scenario number one with four people, the $13 an hour, just the status quo.
Well, I know you do it for the pay.
Exactly, yeah, clearly. But if we were to just, I think, the last time I looked at this, if we were just to keep the status quo, $13 an hour with four people on call slash on duty, which in my mind is kind of the same thing, we would have needed to increase revenues 30%. And that, that if we would have received the whole cap, that still wouldn't have covered it. We would have still needed to find about one, maybe 2% more. So we did, I admit it, I will take full responsibility as the chair for putting ourselves in the red. I will take responsibility for that. And our, our previous board in 2013 did it, did it even worse, I have to say. We went from an all-volunteer, zero firefighter pay to $7.50 an hour. So when that happened, that was a, that was the first, as Stu mentioned, 2014. That's why we, we had to reexamine our fee structure. So does it, it doesn't, it doesn't solve the problem. We need your help, Dad. We need, we need somehow, we've got to go to, go to the legislature. We need to change laws. We need.
But all, all that stuff that you just talked about, and I, and I, I think we'd agree with you. We, I know I've gone to the legislature and said, I mean, even with our sheriff's office, all, most of our search and rescue is volunteer. Um, we spend a lot of time out there patrolling for tourism, and, and I wish I could use some of that. So I, I agree with you. I guess my concern is, we have to have a budget very quickly, and every day that's going by, we're in the red. And so I, I see.
And I'm telling you, we're flexible. We have to be. Obviously, we can't spend money that we don't have.
So would you be flexible enough to go, and I, Commissioner Cox mentioned this, is that under the current proposal, you have Hurricane Valley willing to come up, provide 24-hour staffing for EMT and firefighting without raising any taxes?
I think the chief, I would have to look at that on paper. We would have to have, I would want to know exactly how that would work, and I am not qualified. I'm standing here unqualified. We look to our fire chief to answer questions with, with respect to coverage and things like that. He would have to enter into those kinds of discussions with, with Hurricane Valley.
You know, I, I appreciate your comments. I really do. I, don't blame yourself. This, this is a situation of circumstances more than anything. And so it's, that's part of the issue.
The park service is coming to us, by the way, asking for money too, so. Because they, within the park itself, you know, they're, they're struggling with that. And so Jeff Braebo comes, and we meet with him quite often. He's expressing, he's with his own emergency response, both police and everything. He's saying, hey, we need help. And so, yeah, you're not alone. So, but I do really appreciate what you've done. So one thing I have said, I have looked at your guys' budgets, I've reviewed your past minutes, I've, I, I've really studied, and I can tell how much you care about this and how much you care about the people. And, and I just want to let you know, I'm impressed with how much you do care.
Don't thank me. Thank that guy. Thank her. Thank him. And Jerry Porter back there, they are some of the finest human beings that I have ever been able to, to work with and serve. And it's for them, it's for the people. And, and, and Hurricane too. I mean, these people and Chief Breck back there, that, that put themselves in harm's way. And I, I've seen it, I've watched them train, and I'm, I'm actually honored to be able to spend whatever I, whatever time I can in service to these people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, um, we've had quite a few comments and, yes, sir, please. If, no, no, don't apologize and come and make your comments. You're going to be very articulate and good at this, I can tell. But if it's okay with the audience, you'll be the last person.
My name is Rob McMahon, and I am a resident of Springdale. And I'm also representing the Citizens Aligned for Responsive Governance. And you spoke earlier, uh, this organization is, is a coalition of residents of the area that can't make the meeting, don't want to be in the public. I, it's made up of the citizens and, uh, you know, there's. Citizens Aligned for Responsive Governance. And.
He sent us an email.
Pardon me?
You sent, what was your name again?
Uh, Rob McMahon. And so, you know, it's made up of many people that are on fixed incomes, uh, uh, business owners. And so I just wanted to let you know that. I wanted to speak briefly to the budget. You know, you brought up the numbers, you know, 2.6 million for a 40,000 service area of numbered people. And then 1.3 for 800, so I just leave you with that, Ander. The other thing is, you know, you've heard evidence, you know, from Lucy, and as I kind of distilled it down, it, it almost seems like it's clear evidence that the budget just is, you know, a hard thing to attain. Just is something that is a puzzle that, you know, might be impossible, given those numbers. So I'd, I'd leave you with that. I also want to express my gratitude. You know, I looked at your agenda, you know, and your agenda had 12 items, of which the Damrin Valley, a special and service district of the fire. So you see a broad range of issues throughout the whole county. So, uh, that alone is something that is very beneficial when examining issues, as you get a broad range and a lot of different concerns from many different. The other thing I'd like you to consider is the future of where we're going. Now, Utah has been discovered, you know, the, the advertising for the, uh, five national parks was so successful that everyone wants to come to Utah. And so, you know, real- realistically, when you look at it geographically and, you know, you start to look at response times for fire districts and police. Geographically, you know, you have Laverkin, which is, you know, 800 feet down off Mesa. But, you know, the, the future of that Mesa is probably some development there all the way in. So as you consider looking at a, a local governance and, and trying to attach it to public safety and response times, the geographics of the whole Mesa should be considered, you know, why leave Virgin out? And so I, I agree with local governance, but sometimes you really have to look broader than the local governance to come up with a equitable solution. Just wanted to let you know that. Thank you very much. I appreciate all your work you're doing.
Thank you. And we'd like to thank all of you for your comments. You've all been very articulate and, and expressed your thoughts. If it's okay, we'll deliberate and then decide what we're going to do with this resolution.
Mr. Chair, is it okay if I just briefly just talk about procedure for a minute now?
Yes.
So when, when a county or a city, whoever creates a special service district, creates it, at the creation, the, the district is governed by the body that creates it, in this instance, by the county commission. With this district, I think it was a couple of years before the commission actually delegated that authority. They kept it for, for a while, but they can delegate it to an administrative control board. And they can choose to delegate just about everything or just about nothing. Like, that's completely within your discretion. You cannot delegate by law the ability to levy a tax or increase a tax. And there are a couple of other things you cannot delegate, but you, you can delegate as much or as little as you want, and you can change that delegation at any time. And so tonight, you know, on, on your agenda, you advertised that you could do a complete revocation and, and just take that authority back. There, you could, you could do any middle ground you wanted to, and that delegation isn't necessarily a permanent thing. You can do a delegation one day and revoke it the next. You can revoke a delegation one day and then give it back to the board the next. That, that, the way the law works, that's just how they're set up to do, to run.
That's very good information to know, so.
How, how soon do they have to adopt a budget this year?
By 31st. By, by the last day of this month. And, and then you guys, because the budget would include a tax increase, legally, you guys don't have to sign off on that until June of next year. But in, in practice, if you aren't going to sign off on that. Yeah, for them, before they start spending money, it makes sense for you to also sign off on a budget increase before the end of the year or the very early part of next year, because otherwise the district would have a budget in place, the commission hadn't approved the tax increase, and so they could be spending money that they wouldn't know that they were going to receive.
Or in case of did last year, I'll just refresh everybody's memory. Hurricane had a tax that wanted. It took us a while to get that on our agenda, and Hurricane Valley agreed voluntarily to live within the previous budget. the previous budget until the certainty of tax increase was approved by the county commission. And best by knowledge, that worked out, worked out just fine. And so I, I see several solutions there. I, I do see a looming deadline, but I honestly would, would like to have a crack of at least 10 more days or 13 days so that two weeks from now, we could put this back on our agenda. But have some time to work with them and find out whether or not they can fit this in their budget. If not, I would, I would even be in favor of leaving their board in place, revoking all of their ability to raise even standby fees. I think we clearly need to be involved in that process. Anyway, I'm open to any negotiation on that.
Well, and I, I guess that's, that, that, my concern is, is, and even though you're saying, yeah, you don't have to do this budget increase, I mean, they're going to pass a budget. And, and it needs to be done fairly quickly. I mean, with Christmas coming, you know, it'll be December 31st here very quickly. So we've, we've got a budget that needs to be approved. Um, we've got to do the tax increase or their budget's basically useless.
Absolutely.
And so.
And, and I, by the way, myself, I don't want to cut you off. I apologize. I, I can't bring myself to.
Oh, there's, there's, yeah.
Uh, the, the way I see this, it's really kind of a crunch time, uh, you know, some. First of all, I, I like what you've said, Eric, because we do need, you know, I, some of the emails have said, hey, we're a unique community. And, and I, and I believe that Springdale and Rockville are unique. Uh, your demographics are interesting. I, I've lived my entire life in the east side, grew up in Hurricane, Laverkin. I'm very, very familiar with, with the communities, very, very familiar. And in my lifetime, they've changed a lot. In other words, who lives there and families and whatnot. But there's some dynamics there that puts some extra special pressure on this board. Um, the politics of the area and whatnot. I, I think that there's some difficult decisions that have to be made. That, that maybe as, if the board was this body, those decisions could be made, but they won't be made i- if, since I would be on that board, they wouldn't be made without entered, you know, without a discussion. I mean, this idea that, that, um, just because the county commission takes the board over, that somehow there's not a continuation of dialogue or, or there's not open meetings or there's not discussion just isn't true. And, and I would, if we pass this resolution today, I'd be comfortable with coming back and maybe having, having the board remain or reinstituting the board for some, for maybe some oversight and advisory and maybe retaining some of the, so, some of the stuff back here. I don't know if I'm making sense. I'm just.
Our next commission meeting is the 19th.
And we have to pass our own budget.
We have to pass our own budget and we're, and, and the fire district has to pass a budget by law.
Yep. And, and I can't vote for the, the increase that they, they need. And if they follow their current management model, they need that money.
Well, and, and, and I guess that's my other thing is, is that they are in, in the red right now. They're going to continue to be in the red. The budget that's proposed, if it doesn't have the huge tax increase. And, and it was interesting listening, saying, well, if we don't get the property tax, then, then we're going to hit the standby fees even more, which I agree with Commissioner Cox.
I totally agree with you. There, to me, I don't divide this. I divide the standby a little bit. I do think there should be standby on, on some of the businesses. But not to the heavy weight there. But not on the citizens and it needs to be.
And clearly, I'm not totally opposed to bringing property up. Point how you'd be close to the county. But it has to be in context, overall sustainable.
Yeah. So for me, I consider the standby fee and the property tax to be the same thing. So if, if, for example, there wasn't a standby fee and we were only talking about a tax increase, even though it is 260%, I would probably be more inclined to say, just like we said with Hurricane, you know, it's something that has to happen. But where you have $300 a, anyway.
Yeah. So you have a, you have another board meeting scheduled for the district? You will, the district exists no matter what.
Would, would you be able to meet with us next week? Eric, your board might want to meet first by yourself. I, you, you understand where we're coming from.
So here's, here's the challenge about time is just, we're running out of it for one, as far as days on the calendar. And second of all, everybody's come here to, to have this discussion with us. If we're just postponing it and we end up passing this resolution at the next meeting, then we might as well do it tonight.
Well, I, I would prefer, I would prefer to pass the resolution after I've had a chance. And we notice up working and meet with them. The board, Michigan can do whatever it wants, but, but my preference is give this another shot.
But I, I guess I, I don't see what'll change. We already have a board member standing up. They've passed budgets in the past. They're running in the red. Got to by law approve this budget by the end of the year. That, that's my big concern is that we, we say we're going to give them two more weeks. They'll come to the 19th. They're going to say, hey, we still need these fees. We don't have an option. It has to happen. Um, then by law, we, I, I think we're getting a little tough. I guess I would entertain something that says, right now, we keep the board in place, but we basically take that authority away and, and for the next two weeks. So basically, the board.
Can we do that, Eric? Like. I, I, I think that when it comes to the delegation of authority, you guys can, can do, give complete flexibility as long as you're not delegating things you can't give.
But, but who, how do we effectively talk and negotiate with all of them?
But then at least if, let's say we meet with, with the individuals on, like the 12th, that we come to an impasse, it's already teed up. Then our next commission meeting, we can put their budget on our board. Where I, I'm, I'm just too concerned about waiting to the 19th. Where what we could do is we can meet with them next week, talk to them next week. And then if things, if they come back with a budget that doesn't have a huge tax increase, I, I don't see how it's going to happen, to be honest with you. But then at the meeting on the 19th, we can come back and say, hey, we've worked this out. The commission's going to give that authority back to the board. And then they can have their on the 27th. But I, I don't think we can wait and, and another two weeks because I think we'll be, we just won't have time to act after that. I mean.
So Commissioner Renssberg, are you just, oh, sorry, everybody keeps cutting you off and you're not making sense. Are you just proposing then that, that, that you would take the authority to pass a final budget? That'd be the only authority that the board, the board would still can operate other than that? And then they'd come and present the final budget on, at that 19th? You guys would have that authority to pass it?
On the 19th, we could either just give that authority back so they could pass it on the 27th. Or we could say, take that final resolution because we're going to have to, like, next week, by the 14th, we're going to have to notice up our agenda. We're going to have to put in there all that stuff. We're going to have to put that notice out to the public. And so let's say on the 19th, nothing works out. Well, you know, the holiday season, half the staff's, you know, we're, we're just going to start leaving the staff. We're going to have to, have to try to figure out to notice it. I guess I don't feel comfortable leaving today on the status quo. I, I just, I don't think we have the time. And, and there's too big of issues. But I, I do want to work with the current board and, and talk to them and, and see if they have some options. Um, so.
I think the one good thing about our discussion is everybody understands we have some fundamental problem. And I'm not sure if, if going forward, even if the tax increase was put into place, some of those fundamental problems are going to be addressed.
Yes. A lot of it.
Yeah, a lot of it is structural. And, but this is across the board. We've had this discussion about some of our fire districts on the other side of the county. And I do believe that you're going to see fire districts need to consolidate and work together closer. I mean, it's just kind of on a, it becomes an economy of scale in order to make it work. I mean, you know, to talk about wages, oh, boy, I, I totally get that. I mean, nine bucks an hour, you kidding me? You definitely got to pay guys 15 dollar, or wage benefits. But that means you have to structurally change the way you staff the Hurricane, or the Springdale Fire Station. Got to do that in a way that allows you to do that, spend the same amount of money you spend.
So let me put this proposal across. Um, be- because I, I, I think the chief did mention something that I, I would like to ask him some questions, some things and work with the board a little bit, but I don't think we can wait, to be honest with you.
I don't think we can.
Just timelines, I, I think we'd be running into problems with, with that. And so.
I'd really like to be holding the same meeting on Christmas Eve. I think that'd be great.
Well, you, you can talk to my wife about that. Um, so what I'd like to do is, so we do have a, a current proposal or a resolution. Um, I'd like to amend the current one where, and, and I'm going to have to rely on our county attorney here to kind of work out some of the wording, but we don't abolish the current Rockville. Um, I guess, how do they have it written here? Reestablishing, revocating. But I'd like to keep the board in place. However, at this time, I'd like a resolution that says the county commissioners take over authority of the budget. I got to make sure that the budget and any large purchases um, over, I don't know, I mean, how much, how much would a large, in, in the county, we say $10,000. But you're not, okay. So the county takes over the budget and, and over all purchases over $10,000 right now. And then we also add on this that we will meet with their staff. Um, but then on our next county commission that we, we reappoint this and with the budget. Because I, I, I just don't see anything changing. I, I don't think, even if they say that we're going to come back and cut our proposal by half, I, I just don't see it happening. But, you know, we, we did have some people saying that, hey, like the, the chief saying, I'd like to talk to you, but I think we have to take some action today.
So how does that, so say, I totally, because we also have a CIB loan for the purchase of a new fire truck that needs to be exercised. Well, it can be exercised sooner or later, but it needs to be exercised sooner. Um, and then the budget needs to be passed. And then we need to have this very honest discussion about, about, um, the management and, and do we, do we enter into negotiations and contract with, with Hurricane Valley? I would very much like the board to be a part of that, uh, contract discussion. I don't want to exclude them at all. But at the same time, if the, if the hard decision comes, who makes it? What if there's an impasse?
I think if it's an impasse, then I think that's why we're going to have on our agenda the budget. So we could pass the budget to apply with Utah state law and that we can have the full, us putting, like, changing the board out completely next.
So the board is not dissolved, but the county commission.
Takes over.
Takes, we become kind of a co-board.
No, we take out, over the full control of their budget. And that way, if we can't work something out, we can still put it on our agenda, apply with Utah state law within the timeline.
Right, Attorney. Have you figured that motion out yet?
Can I give you some wording that I think would work for that?
How many state laws did we violate just barely?
So Cheyenne, I'm going to, I'm going to read it and, and then if this is your motion, you're going to say that's my motion. Is that okay? Because this is my best understanding is that your, your motion is that there are two paragraphs in the resolution that say, this is our resolution. This is what we're saying we're going to do. So the first would read, now therefore, be it resolved by the county commission of Washington County, Utah, that its prior delegation of authority to the Rockville Springville Fire Protection District Administrative Control Board is, and I would cross out immediately revoke.
Right.
And add amended so that the Washington County Commission is the budgetary authority. And just period. And then the next one, be it further resolved, um, that the Washington County Commission, and then strike the rest of that sentence, shall place consideration of the final budget on its next regular, regular meeting agenda. And commission and staff shall work with current board and staff to, to resolve issues concerning the, or issues concerning the budget.
Yeah, because I think that's the only way we can do it. So that's my motion, what he said. So I, I, I think this is still giving us the power, the authority to take over to do the steps we need to do. I mean, take over the power of the purse essentially. Still comply with Utah state law, but yet still keep a dialogue going with the fire district for the next two weeks. I mean, if they come in, they've got some proposal, the fire chief too, that fixes this, hey, I'm all for that. Or, you know, even if the cities come in, and I'd give that timeline, but yet still, we can start looking at it. And, and just so you know, is, is I'm going to look at this budget immediately and just say, hey, we're running in the red. That has to stop. And so I, I can tell you the budget that I would propose in the next two weeks is going to be probably substantially different than the budget that's being currently proposed. Um, I, I can understand running in the red a little bit, but having almost a full year, that, that gives me great concern.
Well, there's obviously a lot of discussion on budget and where we're going to go from here. I like the motion. I'll second it. Um, and I have one question. We, we're going to have a vacancy in January on this board because nobody filed. So how do you fill a vacancy?
So the way that, because it's in, now can, correct me. This is a five-member board with two members that are appointed and three that are elected. So again, this is a unique board. Most of our boards are appointed or elected. If it's an elected board, then the board has the authority to fill those vacancies. If it's an appointed board, the county commission fills those vacancies. This is the first time that we've had a mix. Um, and so I think that that would be up to the commission discretion. Maybe in your next meeting, you, you say this is, whether we're going to delegate that authority so that because a majority are elected, we'll give the board the power to appoint.
Somebody could appoint it and we don't necessarily need a motion or we don't need to fix anything. Either, either the commission would appoint it or, or the existing board could fill that slot.
But if, but if you guys want to do that, you should put that on your agenda for the next.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion that's been read to the, to the audience. And, and, uh, I think we understand what we're talking about. I've seconded that.
And, and I'd just like to say to everybody out here that I will be, I'm a budget hawk. Uh, and if anybody ever questions how I spend money, right now I drive a minivan that has 190,000 miles on it with zip ties holding the bumper on. And I just believe, believe in, living in your means. And I also want to tell you that I'm going to be reaching out to Tom Coleman quite a bit in this. I, I have huge respect for Tom. I, he's been great to work with. And just let everybody know, that's, that's who I'm going to be talking to a lot and getting information from. And so if we do hold a meeting, you know, I'll most likely try to invite Tom to come now because I want to be open with him. So.
Well, and my only thought is I, I've hope, I hope, you know, everybody's probably going to go out of here equally dissatisfied. So I think we've done our job. Um, so, but I, I'm hoping that we've heard, that we have, oh, no, don't quote me on equally dissatisfied. But, but the point, the, the, the point being is that I think we're, we, we're trying to continue to listen to, to the local voice and recognize the uniqueness of this district. And, um, I, I, we are going to make health and safety and making sure that, that people have, you know, somebody shows up and that this district continues to function is all of our goal. I mean, that's the common goal that I think all of us have and we're going to work very hard towards it. Um, anyway, I don't know if I've, uh, answered it. I tried to write down everybody's concerns. Do we have a motion to second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay.
I'll say nay. And, and I respect the commission's opinion. I just wanted to know with them or in that common ground. Hope so.
Absolutely. And the, the thing I forgot that I wanted to say also that everybody's brought up here is there's some fundamentals about the funding of this district that is going to be ongoing. It's going to take us a couple of years. And we've talked about different options and, and we're going to need to talk more about those because, you know, the, the chairwoman puts some blame on herself and she really shouldn't have because she, this is, this is a tough situation. And, and I appreciate all of your patience and, and discussing it with us. So. Feels like we should have already ended our meeting, but we still have some items on our agenda.
But you're free to leave. We won't be offended.
So, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, item nine, consideration of resolution R-2017-2263. A resolution approving and execution of an agreement between Blument Building Services and Washington County to provide custodial cleaning and maintenance service for Washington County buildings. Paul, you've been waiting there so patiently.
Hey, just before our deputy, deputies leave, I just wanted to thank them for being here. Thanks for coming, guys. Thank, appreciate it.
Hey, Paul Sullivan, uh, Washington County Building Maintenance Manager. I guess you just want to know a little bit about Bluemont. They clean well in excess of, uh, of a hundred thousand square foot of offices right now. I called all of their, uh, every single one of their references. They all got back to me and gave a, all gave a very good report, some of them very glowingly. They were low bidder on the total. They are two hundred and fifteen thousand and forty dollars. And, uh, that is, uh, actually, the bids this time are really fairly close. So, you know, I'm kind of happy with that. And I think that is kind of the going rate on that. So they should start thirty, the first, well, second, whatever.
Very good.
They use all their own equipment, they use our equipment.
In, in the, uh, in the bid documents, they use all their own equipment. They supply their own cleaning chemicals and the county supplies, uh, paper products and soap.
Air filters.
Air filters. I've decided that it's in the best county, of county's interest that we, that my department changes the air filters. I wasn't happy with how often it was getting done, and I felt like maybe we shouldn't have someone else do that. Really important. And kind of the same thing with the, the, uh, lighting. Although it's been a struggle for us, but, you know, I, I think probably because people don't report it right away, because there's, not everybody knows that we're taking that over now. So.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, have worked closely with Paul for many years and appreciate and value the thought that he puts into his RFPs and how they're evaluated and graded. I'd make a motion in support of resolution two thousand seventeen twenty-two sixty-three. Provide, uh, building services to Washington County from Bluemont Building Services.
Would you have a friendly motion that we just combine nine and ten together? Ones for the.
Yeah, ones for the library.
Yeah.
What's the price for the library?
The price for the library, I did give you the total of both, but the price for the library is ninety-nine thousand three hundred and sixty.
Well, let me retract my motion and I'll make a motion that we combine items nine and ten. Be my first motion.
Very good. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Okay.
Item eleven, consideration of resolution.
No, 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 no. Now we got to vote on it.
We got to vote on it. He just retracted it.
I was procedural.
Oh, you got me all excited. Where are we at?
We're on nine and ten.
And I thought we were combined.
So I'll make a motion to approve, uh, resolutions twenty-two sixty-three and twenty-two sixty-four.
Okay.
Providing services from Bluemont Building Services to Washington County for the county buildings and library.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item eleven, consideration of resolution R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two sixty-six. A resolution approving an agreement between Pictometry International Corp. and Washington County.
Commissioners, this is pretty much a renewal. We use Pictometry to do flyovers and take multi-angle pictures that we then use in our, in our assessing program. The, the contract price ends up being pretty large. Um, but we share that with the various municipalities all chipping a significant amount of that, because then they use it in their planning and zoning. And so this is just having an update on that. There, we're going to, we're ordering a flyover to happen next spring. And that's what.
Very good. Yeah, this is very important for the assessor's office and our, mainly assessors, but.
It's useful. Search your ass.
Yep.
My GIS uses it quite a bit.
Very good.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve resolution number R dash two thousand seventeen dash twenty-two sixty-six. A resolution approving an agreement between Pic, Pic, how do you say that?
Pictometry.
Pictometry International Corporation in Washington County.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I know I've talked way too much this meeting, but I have a request.
Yeah.
Would it be okay for you guys to go back and reopen item G from the consent agenda? When you talked about that, I didn't have my thoughts organized or some information in front of me that I'd kind of like to talk about.
Hey, you've got some updated information on that?
I do.
Okay.
So, so ideally, someone would make a motion to go back.
So somebody will make a motion to reopen our agenda to, to discuss and consider changes.
To reopen the agenda and consider item request from RFP Durham Jones. Diamond Valley special.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. We have now reopened item G.
Thank you. So the county approved a special improvement district in nineteen ninety-one in the Diamond Valley area for road improvements. This is, so that's what this is, this isn't fire related. This is, this is a special assessment area now is what they're called. Back then, they were called special improvement districts. There are five accounts that are quite delinquent on that, um, last payments being made a couple of years ago. And, um, so the, the treasurer's office came to the county attorney's office and said, hey, it's time to start doing some collection on these. We don't have any attorney that is, has any experience that, with collections or any attorney that has any desire to have any experience with collections in our office. We've, we've used Durham Jones Pinniger for special improvement district collections in the past. We reached out to them and said, how much would it cost to do these?
They did Dixie.
They did Dixie Springs. We feel like they do, they do a good job. We feel like the rates are fair. And so the attorney's office would, would ask you authorize this. Well, authorize the use of outside counsel to do these collections.
I'm fine with. So I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we rescind our prior motion to, guess, to deny, to acceptance of the request for, a proposal from Durham Jones and Pinniger for the collection of Diamond Valley Special Improvement District account.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. This commission report. I, I will say this one thing, uh, we both went to Salt Lake yesterday and, and I'm not easily impressed, but seeing Air Force One fly in and, uh, see the president get out and, and, uh, it was, it was something that was very interesting, very wonderful. And I, I think I, I don't think it's about party, even though I support the president. I, I think just to, you know, see the president of the United States and anyway, it was, it was quite special. And you were at the Capitol.
I, I was. It, it, uh, and it was special event for the Capitol and I think they, um, controversy.
I was joking around, the, the protesters, uh, no traffic was allowed up to the Capitol, so they had to walk up. They could still go up. Of course, they were complaining about that, but I made the comment, that's like a national monument. Just can't drive there. The people protesting the monument was kind of like a monument. They said to walk. That will stand the terms.